I'd like to call this meeting to order. This, it is June the 8th. This is the regular meeting of the Board of Trustees of Village of North Hudson here on June 8th, 2010, 7:00 PM. Meeting starts at 7:00. We're going. I'm sorry. Is that simple? I would ask the clerk if she will take the role.
Trustee captain.
Here.
President Klein.
Here.
Okay, O'Brien-Bergman, absent, Stanford.
Here.
Thomas, absent, Swooken.
Here.
Anne Zapp.
Here.
Colleen indicated to me that she will make every attempt to get here, probably in an hour or so, and she has a personal family obligation. All right. I would ask the board members if they've had an opportunity to read the minutes of the meeting of May 4th, and if so, I would entertain a motion to accept them, then we can discuss any changes or edits that you would like to make. Thank you, Darrell.
I'll second.
Thank you, Joe. Any comments? Any edits or corrections? If not, all in favor of accepting the minutes as presented indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. We're now at that point in the meeting when we have comments from the floor. Now, Brad Beckman is here and will be saying a few words, but before that, I'd just like to mention how I met Brad and what, a little bit about what this is all about. We try here, the Board of Trustees, to periodically let the citizens in the community know what services are available. And you may recall about, it was almost exactly a year ago, I had representatives from Operation Help provide us with a resource manual and provided some discussion about the resources that are available. On Thursday, I was invited to attend a meeting of Source. Source is serving our underserved residents compassionately and equitably. You know, it was during that meeting that I met Brad. Brad is from the county, and Brad, I would ask you to take the podium and tell us a little bit about how the county can help.
Sure. Again, my name is Brad Beckman. I'm the manager of the Aging Disability Resource Center of St. Croix County. That's what we do here about ABRC. It's a statewide initiative. St. Croix County has chosen this option, and that will be on two years in August. I'm just going to go through some of the information. If you've got questions, you can ask later. And that's what I provided the brochures. I'll leave the rest of the brochures and things here. What the Aging Disability Resource Center is, is serving people in the community. What they did was, they combined long-term care services, aging, disability, one, in one area, one unit for the county, and a one-stop shop for services. And by we mean, what we mean by that is, the disability population is, our target group is from 18 to 59, anyone serving physical disability, development disability, or has some mental health issues. We also serve the older population, which St. Croix County always had served, was the 60 and over, providing all of the aging services, like the meal program, transportation, chore services, volunteer options, transportation, and all of that. So it's, it's services that the community can use in St. Croix County, and we have 10 sites throughout the county. Hudson is one of them. We serve all of North Hudson and Hudson with services. And I've done presentations to the county and speaking to different groups of citizens throughout the county. A lot of these times, people want to know, especially the taxpayers, what are we getting for our money, and who are we serving, and all of this thing. But the neat thing about this is, it serves the whole community, and it's an option for people, even if it isn't public finance, they do donate to this program. It is not a welfare program. They do pay for funding for the meal program, and they also do for transportation, and some of the other services we provide. Alone in St. Croix County, we have 10 nutrition sites, and they're all listed in here throughout the county. We served over 50,000 meals. So you can see, as our population continues to grow, the older population is obviously growing at a rapid rate. So that's exciting news. And this Friday, we have a senior picnic going on, which will be at Robert's, where the whole county will come and transport all the seniors. We'll have about 250 seniors that will be at that event. So, we try to provide recreation activities, programming for all of the senior centers, and we provide staff and volunteers. We run this program with 300 volunteers in the community, throughout the county. And we also have the transportation options, which is an important issue, especially for seniors or disability people. How do they get to the doctor appointment? How do they get to their shopping trips? How do they get around? We have handicap-accessible vehicles that they can use. And last year, we transported over 15,000 rides for St. Croix County. So you can see, this is a growing thing and a huge thing. We also, at the ABRC, are the one-stop shop for when they come in and want to know about public finance. We work with a program, Community Health Partnership, that they have the public option for like the medical model. We work through them. They have to go through our doors to get that service to them. So it's a really, a growing service, and a huge need in the community as the community is aging, and also the disability population. And it makes sense because it's a one-stop shop. Also, I provided, and as George said, we have a book provided, which we saw a need in the community. If people wanted to know, where do we go to get services? This has all of the services listed in St. Croix County, from transportation, to housing options, to nursing homes, to all the different services, which are, which is really important to people, and people want to know. And we have already distributed over 5,000 of these to the community. So, you can see the real need for that. I know you have a full agenda today. I just kind of wanted to hit some of the target points. I have the brochures there. It kind of lists all the services we provide and kind of some of the, how do they access them. We are located at the government center, but we also go through the whole countywide too. So, is there any questions at this time?
Thank you, Brad. Anybody? One of the sad things about this is, here we are, hearing this. We wonder how many people out there have heard the same message. Obviously, a lot have. I would rely on the trustees, as well as anybody who is in the audience, who knows of someone who can use these services to direct them to the county level. Go up to that county office, seek out Brad, and get the help that you, that you need.
Yeah, we have an excellent staff that really work with us. We also have adult protection services for vulnerable adults in the community. If somebody knows that there's issues going on with seniors or the disability population, come and see us. We will help work that, through that. I mean, it gives an option for seniors and people that feel they're being abused in their, in a situation. We have that services. We also have an elderly benefit specialist and a disability benefit specialist that can help you work through the maze, because if you've ever had to work with families, or that, how to deal with hospitals, and clinics, and bills, we have people that are able to do that. Medicare Part D, you've heard about that, the prescription drug program. We provide that here in St. Croix County. Badger Core Plus is the new program you've heard about in Wisconsin, where people can access. We help people get through that maze. We also have given computer assistance if they need it, because not everybody has a computer and is able to use it. So we have staff that are able to handle all of that kind of things for the county.
Very good. Thank you very much, Brad.
Thank you.
The brochures that he has given to us, we will put them into the anteroom back here for anyone who would like to take a copy.
Thank you.
All right. Is there anyone else who would like to address the board on a topic not on the agenda? If not, we'll move on to the president's comments. I do have a couple things that I would like to just comment on. Couple residents have talked to me about the skid marks in the street. I have called Violia. I talked to the supervisor, Solid Waste, from Violia. He is aware of it. At least, he's aware of it now. He has been out riding the streets of North Hudson. He has seen these and will address the issue. Enough said. If you don't know what I'm talking about, take a look in your street. There is a magazine that each of the board members gets called the municipality. I draw the board's attention to this particular edition. There are a couple topics in here which are quite timely. One of them has to do with local officials and alcohol licenses. And the other topic I want to bring to your attention is the new law about to take effect on, let's see, July 1st, I believe, is when the new alcohol laws take effect. There's also July 5th, when the, when the smoking law takes effect. I think it's important that all members of trustees read those two articles, learn a little bit more about the ambiguity of some of the laws that are signed by our governor. Good luck trying to figure them out. Even the League of Municipalities is having trouble trying to guide us in that respect, in those regards. We have, the next item which is on the agenda is appointment of the library board representative. Rob Howard will be taking over as our representative from the library board, and I believe that we need a, I'll make the motion that Rob Howard be the library board representative for the Village of North Hudson.
Second.
Thank you, Colleen. Is there any discussion? Any questions? All right. All in favor of the motion to accept Rob Howard, indicate by saying aye.
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 Pose same sign. The next is appointment of the board of zoning appeals member. This is the second alternative, and Zach Kanzler has agreed to fill that post. I would make a motion to appoint Zach Kanzler as the second alternative on the board of zoning appeals.
I'll second.
Thank you, Joe. Zach is here, and Zach, if you'd just stand up, and we can get the camera on you. Now we know Zach.
I'm official, man.
Thank you very much. Not yet.
Gotta vote.
We have to vote first. All in favor of Zach, indicate by saying aye.
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 Thank you very much, Zach, and I, I really appreciate you brought your lovely wife with you. Okay. The administrators' comments is next on the agenda. Gloria, do you have anything you'd like to say?
Believe it or not, I have nothing to say. Don't faint.
Really? Okay. And the village clerk is next. Becky?
Yeah, I have a couple things.
Oh, good.
Just first want to remind the board that we, especially those who are on the board of review, that board of review is coming up on June 22nd. We have held our open book session. That was on June 2nd. I had a couple of people attend that, and so we will be having the board of review, June 22nd, from 5:00 to 7:00 PM here at the village hall. Just a quick note about the Riverway zoning ordinance. The, the codebooks have all been updated with the new information, and as it relates to the St. Croix Riverway zoning ordinance, there were a few typographical errors that were discovered prior to it going to codification. It was determined that those changes weren't of any substance, so those changes were made and are in your new inserts. So, it's a slight variation from what was originally approved, but nothing of content, just grammatical and renumbering issues, so...
And it was forwarded with those changes onto the Department of Natural Resources?
Yep, the DNR has received that revision, so...
Okay.
And then, just a comment about the codebook updates. As I mentioned, they have all been updated, so those of you who, who brought your codebooks in, they are available here. You can pick them up after the meeting if you haven't done so, and if you have not brought your codebook in, please do so, and we'll get it updated for you. And that's all I have.
Thank you, Becky. All right. The next item on here is the item number five, the 2010-2011 Class A B Alcohol Beverage License, cigarette license and amusement permits. And please replace the document that was in your binder with the one that was provided on your table in front of you. It should say in red in the top-right corner, revised. I believe the law is clear. We need to do each one of these individually, so you'll notice that there are five different motions that will have to be made, and I will ask you, whoever will make the motion, to please read the motion in its entirety. Somebody want to start? We got five motions here, folks. There's seven of us, six here tonight.
Mr. Chairman, I approve to approve the Class A Fermented Malt Beverage and Class A Intoxicating Liquor License for Village Liquor Store, Kimberly White Agent, with an effective date of 1/7/2010 through 30/6/2011, as recommended by the village clerk. All license approvals are contingent upon any outstanding payment obligations to the village being satisfied.
Second.
Thank you, Colleen. Any discussion? I'll just add something here. The laws in the state of Wisconsin regarding these various licenses, you'll notice, well, can be very confusing. As I already mentioned, this edition of the municipality magazine tries to clarify the difference between a class quote "A" unquote slash quote "Class A" unquote is described. And if that isn't confusing, and you need an attorney, call Terry on your own time.
I think we went through this last year about this.
We do have a new board member, and... Yeah, and it's, it's really bizarre. So, all in favor of the motion, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. All right. Who'd like to read the next one?
Motion to approve Class A Fermented Malt Beverage License for Freedom Value Center, Inc., Paul Clerk Agent, with an effective date of July 1st, 2010 through June 30th, 2011, as recommended by the village clerk. All license approvals are contingent upon any outstanding payment obligations to the village being satisfied.
Second. Joe? Any comment? All in favor of the motion is read. Please indicate by saying aye.
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 Pose same sign. The long one now.
I'll get in.
Thanks, Dan.
Make a motion to approve the Class B Fermented Malt Beverage, Beverages, and quote "Class B Intoxicating Liquor License" with an effective date of July 1, 2010 through July 30, 2011, for LDJT, Inc., doing business as Village Inn, Lee Halverson, Agent, Malaloo Inn, Inc., doing business as Malaloo Inn, Peggy Multer, Agent, Stars Bar, Inc., doing business as Stars Bar, William Suter, Agent, Xanore, Inc., doing business as Cozy Corner, Mark Zappa, Agent, Lambden, Inc., doing business as Mountain Maria's Restaurante, Anna Marie Burr, Agent, Seasons Tavern, BDC LLC, doing business as Seasons Tavern, Carol Reivers, Agent, and Zappa &amp; Zappa, DBA, doing business as Muds &amp; Suds, Mark Zappa, Agent, as recommended by the village clerk. All license approvals are contingent upon any outstanding payment obligations to the village being satisfied.
Second.
Thank you. Second. Mark, you want to say something?
Beg your pardon?
Do you want to say something?
I don't think so.
I thought he'd say, "I abstain."
Well, Kerry, I thought you were, yeah, "I abstain," yeah.
I only say that because we're going to vote, and...
Okay.
All in favor of the motion, indicate by saying aye.
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 Pose same sign. Thank you. Next one has to do with tobacco sales. Want to read that one? Okay, Joe.
Joe?
Tobacco sales license over the counter. Motion to approve the over-the-counter tobacco sales licenses for the Village Inn, Malaloo Inn, Stars Bar, Village Liquor Store, and Freedom Value Center, with an effective date of July 1, 2010, through June 30, 2011, as recommended by the village clerk.
Second.
All in favor of the motion, indicate by saying aye.
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 Pose same sign. And the last one.
I'm in. Coin-operated amusement license. Motion to approve Coin-operated Amusement License for Malaloo Inn, Stars Bar, Village Inn, Seasons Tavern, Muds &amp; Suds, Cozy Corner, with an effective date of July 1, 2010, through June 30, 2011, as recommended by the village clerk.
Second. All in favor of the motion is read. Please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign.
I'll abstain in that one, too, George.
Thank you, Mark. In your packet, you can see that there is the renewal beverage license applications for each one of the companies that you've just voted on. Item number six, fireworks permit for Mr. Zappa. And I think you'll see the issue statement here. This was, the motion was, or the suggested motion is on the issue statement, and...
Okay. I'll, I'll try it if that's okay.
Thank you, Joe.
Move to approve the application for the fireworks paraphernalia sale permit for Mark Zappa, subject to approval from the appropriate Hudson Fire Department representatives, and with the following inclusions: No smoking signs must be displayed, fire extinguishers available, no fireworks sold to persons under 18 years of age. Permit length to be July 1, 2010, to June 30, 2011.
Second.
Any questions or comments?
Just a question. What does that specifically mean, "subject to approval from the appropriate Hudson Fire Department representatives"? What do they need to approve?
I can answer that. A fire marshal comes up and checks for any obvious fire hazards and make sure, like, for example, fluorescent lights are encased, and that there isn't open fire hazards.
So, every year, when you make application, they come and do a site inspection? Is that what that means?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
They've had it full-time.
Thanks. I just wondered what that meant.
Any others? All in favor of the motion is read. Please indicate by saying aye.
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 Pose same sign. Next one we have here is...
Mark probably abstains.
I abstain, too.
That on the record.
I think we have a representative here from Cozy Corner. Is that right? I seem to recognize this young man. For the record, please indicate.
My name's Ryan Nelson, co-owner of Cozy Corner.
Want to just talk a little bit about...
Basically, what we are suggesting is, on June 19th, Saturday, June 19th, we are having our second annual Cozy Corner grand opening. It's just a gathering, so, be-bake tournaments. We're asking permission to have drinking outside of our liquor license allowance. We have, kind of same as last year, went well last year. We'll be making, or building a fence, having everyone outside. We'll have to go through our building. Just a fun little gathering, I guess.
The details of this request are actually in your board packet, and there were the six conditions. I'd entertain a motion, then we can, you can ask any questions of Ryan.
Also move to allow the, the extended premises permit for the second grand opening of June 19, 20, 2010, for Cozy Corner to have their second annual grand open.
Can we, can I add, "subject to the six conditions"?
Subject to the conditions set forth by, I believe, Mark and, or the police department and the board.
Thank you. Any second?
Second.
Thank you, Colleen. Any questions of Ryan?
Just, not necessarily of Ryan, just a clarification. The operation that would be permitted under this modified permit would be until 2:30 Sunday morning, but the outside music is required to end at 10:00. Is that, is that right?
The only thing listed here is the, the marching band. Is that the only music you're going to have?
For the most part. I mean, we might have the radio of some sorts, but marching band would be the actual loud music played, so, yes.
So, from 10 o'clock on, you're going to ask people just to drink in silence, is that?
Yeah, well, something like that.
Yeah, that's how it works.
Singing and dancing.
Yeah.
For the most part, it would be random.
What time's the band going to be, the Badger Band going to be there?
Six to 6:30.
Six o'clock. They're actually, some of them are going to play in the be-bake tournament, and I've given them free rein to do whatever, so they'll probably play multiple times, I'm assuming. I can't tell you exactly when. But when the be-bake tournament's done is when they'll do their actual presentation, so...
Ryan, I think, in all, you know, full disclosure here, it is not the entire Badger Band.
No.
It's just 10 to 15 members of the Badger Band.
Yes, yes.
Small traveling. Small traveling. They travel in a van. It's...
Couple of them.
Okay. Well, we wish you luck.
I heard the whole band, but...
Yeah. Maybe we could invite them for the Pepperfest parade.
I have.
Okay. We wish you a lot of luck with this.
They start their practice that week, so they never can do it.
Maybe we'll have to move Pepp... No, I won't even get into that. Any other board members have any questions or comments for Ryan? If not, all in favor of the motion, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Thank you very much, Ryan.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Plan commission, as I understand, did not meet, and there's probably no one here to update. Personnel and Finance Committee met at 6:00, and we did have some interesting discussions, not the least of which happened to be, we ought to pay our bills. And so, I think those numbers are in your board packet. Would a member of the Finance Committees care to make a motion?
I move approval of the May 2010 non-recurring village claims in the total amount of $67,287.87.
Thank you. I'll second if you really have. You just did, Joe. Thank you very much. Is there any questions about any of the items that are in this month's list of bills that we paid? This being a spending item, I will ask for a roll call vote. Let's start with Mr. Zappa.
Yes.
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 Yes. Yes.
Thank you. Gloria, would you like to talk about the 2011 budget planning timeline?
Sure. You'll see in your board packet, there's an office, or administrator's memo and the timeline for the 2011 budget. Basically, that's been given to the department heads along with copies of forms for helping fill out that, the budget, and the budget worksheet. Without knowing what the state is going to, to do this year, it's hard to start early, but we felt it was important to get a, a early jump on, on this. And, did you want to add anything to that?
Do you want to talk about the discussion we had regarding the increase?
There was a recommendation by the Finance Committee to change the fourth paragraph down, where it reads, "Department Heads Are Expected to Submit Expenditures Requested That Are Equal to or No More Than," and it had 3% increase of their total department. The board's asking for a 0% increase. And, other than that, everything else is, remains the same.
Thank you, Gloria. Are there any questions or comments regarding this? I'll just throw out that the timeline here is quite aggressive. As we look at it last year, as it has in the past, we seem always to be rushed towards the end of the year. Gloria has put this together, distributed it already, so that it's something that will be on every department head's mind. They'll be thinking about this as they proceed through the rest of this year. The next item on the agenda here in the personnel and finance committee is the employee health insurance benefits. I will leave it open to any board member who would like to enter in any discussion, but I also remind you that at the end of this agenda, you'll notice item number 14, will be an opportunity for the board to discuss this in a closed session, because this is part of healthcare benefit compensation for the village employees, and, but I will throw it out to Gloria if you have anything that you'd like to...
I just want to add that there's three documents that you would have found on your thing to take with you for your closed session or to review now. Basically, it's using last year's rates with a six percent contribution increase, just to say, so that you can see the dollar amounts, and then there's a sheet that says comparing what St. Croix County currently has and a memo from the city, so it gives you a flavor of what the other area municipalities are doing.
Thank you very much, Gloria. Public Works, Public Works was very busy last month, and I will turn this over to Darrell.
I mean, last month, Public Works is always busy, aren't we, Mark? Yeah. Sounded like a slight. A couple of things quickly under, under chair update, bids have been let for crack filling and seal coating, those are budgeted items, and so at the next Public Works meeting, we'll be discussing that and we'll be bringing that to the village board at an early opportunity. We did discuss at some length the stormwater utility fund in consultation with Cedar Corporation, and after extended conversation with respect to the possibility of using a credit system on, on the commercial applications, we decided that to begin the process, we would not use a credit system, we would just take all of them as, as the applications come in, we can revisit the issue later if, if it requires a credit system on some of the larger applications, but it, out of the get-go, we're, it's gonna be on a par basis, residence and, and commercial. Several items that came through Public Works that require some action here at, at this meeting, the first one is an STP funding, this is urban road funding application, and we identified based on the, the ratings of the village streets and the kind of streets that would be candidates for this particular program, which must be a collector street, that Wisconsin Street North would be a potential candidate, so we did discuss and then ultimately recommend, and I'll have a motion coming, to authorize Cedar Corporation to prepare an STP application for the Wisconsin Street North project, this is the planning phase of that, there'll be no cost to the village from Cedar Corp. to do this, this will be part of our relationship with Cedar Corp., therefore, there's no downside to the village to make the application, and even if this would go through its full process and ultimately we would be awarded funds, we would then need to decide if in fact we're gonna proceed with the project, so this does not put the village at any risk, but it preserves the option in the event that we want to move ahead with the project. So my motion, Mr. Chairman, would be to recommend that the board have Cedar Corporation prepare the STP application for the Wisconsin Street North project.
Second.
Any discussion, any questions? Since this is not an outright spending, we're not out...
This is planning.
We're not outlaying any capital, I'll just ask for a voice vote, all in favor of the motion, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign.
We also discussed the fact that the Wisconsin Department of Transportation still is carrying an indication that there are a couple of old projects, one was back in 1995 and the other one was about in 2005, one was on Summer Street North and the other was on Lemon Street, where an application for funding was submitted and some funds were approved, but the village ultimately did not proceed with those projects, so to clean up the records that exist at the State Department of Transportation, we are requesting that the village send a letter to the Wisconsin Department of Transportation, in effect releasing those funds, now bear in mind, there isn't really any money to release, we're just saying that we did not do those projects, therefore, clean up your books and bring, bring it back to zero, it really cleans up the process. So our motion would be to have the move that the village sent forward a letter to the Wisconsin Department of Transportation, releasing the funds for the previously mentioned projects on Lemon Street and Summer Street North.
Second. Any questions or comments on this? All in favor of the motion as indicated, please, please say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign.
We discussed at length an inquiry from a resident at 324th Sixth Street, and the resident indicated that the rise of the driveway from Sixth Street into the driveway is sufficiently steep that it has caused some damage to the vehicle. Upon investigation of the, of the situation and a site visit by our Public Works superintendent and village engineer, it was determined that this condition has existed for quite a number of years, and the, the origination of the project was not caused by anything the village either did to cause the rise, or failed to do to correct the rise, it's been that way all along. While we're sympathetic with the resident in, in the fact that it is a, a rather steep rise into their driveway, we find no, no fault or negligence on the part of the village to have caused the problem, and so we have authorized in Public Works, and my motion here would be to have, have the village engineer forward a letter to the homeowner indicating that the village is not responsible for changing the driveway.
Second.
In our packet, there is a letter from Cedar Corp. dated June 3rd, to assume then that letter did not go out yet? This is a draft?
I think it's the proposed letter.
Okay, alright. So what we're approving tonight basically is this letter.
Just to have them send the letter.
My only recommendation on that is to change the date so it reflects the action by this board on this date.
That would be a good point.
Will you follow up on that, Mark? Just, yeah, just change the date. Any other comments by the board? And that resident is not here, so...
No.
Okay. All in favor of the, all in favor of the motion as read, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign.
For several months, we have been discussing the use of a utility permit, this has gone through several passes at the, at, at Public Works, it has been reviewed by, by Terry, our village attorney, and he did give it a final review tonight, so our submission to the board, and you have seen this in draft form several times, it's also now in your packet, and essentially what this would do is give the village the opportunity to have some escrow funds in the event a contractor on public right-of-way does some excavation for utility work of, of any kind, and then does not restore that property in the right-of-way to its original, original condition, we have some funds to do that without cost to the village. So our motion is to recommend to the village board approval of the utility permit, and it has been reviewed by, by Terry prior to this meeting.
Second.
Just making sure I got the motion correct. Becky, did you get the motion?
I just have a motion to recommend the utility permit.
Okay.
Do you have, do you want to add anything to that?
Dated, I, I had May 18th, but you said that there is a, a subsequent addition to that.
June 4th.
June 4th.
Yep. That was after Terry had, that was back when we do...
Okay. Any question, board, any comments from you, Terry?
No, no, it's fine, yeah, we are gonna address the ordinance itself as well, just to, to make, but not tonight.
Okay. All in favor of the motion as read, please indicate by saying aye.
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 Pose same sign.
And our final item, and if, if the chair will refrain from breaking into peals of laughter over... Are approving a contractor's body.
Stan, just...
Okay, I just missed the second, yeah, sorry.
This, this item, this final item is the, the purchase of a new contractor's body for the 1997 International Truck, this is a budgeted item, it is in the budget this year, and that's, that's the funding source, and we did approve in Public Works and are recommending then to the full village board the acceptance of the bid from Bowrock, for the Bowrock heavy dr, heavy drop side contractor body, the bid comes from Truck Utilities Inc., the total cost is $9,450, and our motion is to approve the purchase of that named contractor's body for the 1997 International at a cost not to exceed the bid amount of $9,450.
Thank you, Colleen. Any discussion? This is something, Mark, I think you've been asking for, for several years, isn't it?
Correct. Because for years it's had in that building over there, so it can never get washed or anything else during winter time, so it just...
Rust it away. Yep. Well, now you're getting, when, what's the timeline on actually getting it installed?
Well, some stuff I have going on, and there's also, it's gonna be later for me getting rid of the, with the truck, but they told me once it's over there, we should have it back within two, three weeks, possibly as soon as I can call them, they'll start making the body, probably bring the truck and all that stuff.
Oh, okay. So this isn't a, a body that's already been manufactured and you just drop it in? It's custom made? Okay. Any other questions? This is a spending question, so we'll have a roll call vote, we'll start with you, Stan?
Uh, yes.
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 Thank you. What we, we didn't hear on the update, and I'd just like to add a comment of this and ask, maybe ask Mark if he'd like to talk about it, the 10th Street project is, is really coming along, isn't it? As I understand, it's ahead of schedule?
Basically, right now, 10th Street project isn't ahead of schedule, they were ranked up today.
Yeah.
But it is ahead of schedule, right now, we tend to believe they'll be putting down the asphalt, probably within the next week, weekend, half, two weeks, project will be completed. Right now, what's scheduled is, the sub-basin crew should be completed hopefully by Thursday night, the curb and gutter crew will be here on Friday, basin crew will be back in a week, and they're hoping to actually have it ready for the pavement that Thursday, but it'll be up to when pavement contractor, tower asphalt is ready to come in.
I understand there was a little issue with the sewer, the storm sewer?
Well, storm sewer basically because of the side, and it was included in the bed.
Yeah.
We knew there was a good chance we were gonna have to lower the water main in the section of where it drops into Webster Park, and we ended up, did have to drop the water main basically about two and a half feet, which I have all the documentation, pictures, and I was actually chief running the mouth, so I had to let's see, and we showed how we did it, but it is, done, everything is back, people were, basically we had the water off for roughly about five and a half hours to the residents, by the time we had everything polished and back on and so...
Okay. Very good. Okay. Very good. Joe, it's, you're on here for public safety.
Well, I think those of you who are interested can read our meeting minutes for our Thursday, May 13th meeting, other than that, I have no report, but I think the chief has a couple of items he wants to talk to you about, or us about, B and C, so I'll defer to, to Mark.
As you can see, I've asked these to be put on the agenda, they did not make it through public safety because they, both items came up after the public safety committee meeting, and I thought it was important that they be addressed prior to our next meeting, which is Thursday, and then of course, the board meeting, which would then be in July. 11B shows sex offender community notification meeting announcement. I have information that we have a home that's for sale in the village, which I will not give out the address of as of yet, the closing is, is said to be Friday, June 25th, which is obviously in the future, and the person that is tentatively purchasing this house is a registered sex offender, the home does fall outside of our ordinance related to safe zones and whatnot, so there are no issues as far as the violation of our sex offender registry, residency requirements or safety zones, but we will be putting together on May, I'm sorry, on Monday, June 28th at 7:00 PM, Monday, June 28th at 7:00 PM, we'll be putting together a level three community notification meeting to basically answer questions and talk about the sex offender that's gonna be moving into town. Her name is Kim Maddox, Kim L. Maddox, dated birth of 3/26/1971, she is a registered sex offender, she is no longer on supervision, and we'll talk more about that at the community meeting, but I wanted to let you know, she currently resides in River Falls, and River Falls did a very similar community notification meeting when she was released from her incarceration into their community, she now has lapsed off of her probation or her parole, she's no longer under supervision, but still has to register as a sex offender in the state of Wisconsin, and because of her level and, and the crime that was committed, the law enforcement official within the jurisdiction, obviously myself, has a choice of doing a level one, level two, or level three. Level one is basically just that law enforcement in the area would be notified that she lives here, level two would be a targeted notification that I could tell either neighbors, schools, whatever kind of particular group that I felt was, was in need of, of knowing, or level three, which is a community notification meeting where we invite anyone and everyone to come to a meeting and ask questions, talk a little about sex offenders, talk about sex offender registry, we'll have experts in the field there to answer questions and talk a little bit more about that, but that'll be Monday, June 28th, at this time, I don't have a location, I'm gonna ask the school if we can use their gym, but I have not been in touch with them yet, so I anticipate that that will be the location, we need a large setting, this doesn't fit with the amount of people that I imagine are gonna be at this meeting, and the city of Hudson chief has also offered that he would like to be at the meeting as well, because obviously this person may pass between the two communities. Questions?
Mark, it's, do I understand correctly, it's discretionary whether you do a level one, level two, or level three?
It, it would be up to me on what level to, to put them out at, typically, there's a court team that meets if it's a person that's coming out of a jail or prison setting, a court, the court team in the St. Croix County, or all the chiefs in St. Croix County, as well as the sheriff and any other probation and parole personnel that we invite, this because there already was a court team meeting to, to set her, or to recommend the chief of River Falls to do a level three, I, there's no reason for us to convene another court team meeting and discuss the same information, so I'm just gonna take that lead and, and go with the level three. First state statute, it's up to me on what level they, they are announced at. And obviously, we want to, we talk about this a lot at the court team meetings, is that we want to make sure that when we have a level three, it's a person that fits a level three, we, it's, it's not unlike the crying wolf, we don't, if a person has an offense from 20 years ago, we don't necessarily want to be doing a level three on them if they have had no offenses since then, because we need to make people understand that a level three meeting is an important meeting, it's someone that we definitely need to pay attention to within our community, and to make sure that the community is safe.
Okay, I was just trying to determine if you could have done a level one, but you decided to do a level three, there must be some, something that you see that's serious enough to warrant doing the level three.
That's correct, and we'll talk... That's correct, and we'll talk more about that at the meeting.
Okay.
And I just wanted to make sure that the meeting was notified. We will post information about the meeting as well, but I wanted this to be the first location. We talked about it, obviously, trying to get the word out to as much of the public as we possibly can.
That was at 7:00 PM on the 28th?
7:00 PM on the 28th. And the location to be decided, but again, I'm hoping for the elementary school. Any other questions on that topic? And of course, at the meeting, I will discuss, because it'll be three days after the closing date on the home, I will give out the address and those types of things. But until that time, I don't want to impede on the purchase of that home or anything related to that. And so the people that I've talked to about this particular person, you know, we've agreed that it will hold the location until the meeting. Under C, the 2010 COPS hiring grant, the CHP application update. If you recall, back in 2009, the Public Safety Committee approved the application to the COPS grant back at the time. It was considered the community-oriented policing grant to, that President Obama had authorized a lump sum of money to try to put either cops back on the street that had been removed because of budgetary issues, to help make sure that the people that were in line to be released because of budgetary issues, those types of things. He put a bunch of money into this program, and it was allotted to a number of different agencies. There was an application process. It has come back again, where there is currently funding available for 2010. Those agencies that applied in 2009 and were not granted any funds have been asked to update their applications and hopefully be awarded with a, an officer, a position that would be available for three years, paid for at 100% of wages and fringe and all those types of things, with the commitment that in the fourth year, the village would pick up the cost of that officer and hold them for one, at least one year. Obviously, they could employ that person for as long as they wanted to, but they would have to commit, if they accept the money for the first three years 100%, to hold that position and keep that position filled for one year at the end of those three years. Did that make sense, how I described that? So I'm looking for approval from the board to go ahead and update our application with the understanding that if we are approved, the three years will be paid for with a commitment to that fourth year.
I have a question on that, Mark. And I'll lay out a scenario, and I'll look for response, reaction from you. We apply for this grant, and we get it. And shortly thereafter, one of our officers decides to move on. Are we required by the dictates of this grant to hire another officer to replace the one who left, or can we quote-unquote "use" the one that we just got from the grant?
And without doing any research on that, I would, my assumption based on this information is it's for increasing the staffing level by one officer, unless we could show that you all, as a board, in the budgetary process for 2011, were going to reduce the police department by one officer. An officer leaving of their own free will creates a vacancy.
Yes.
It doesn't, it doesn't create, these funds are to save a position, if you will, or create another position that's needed within the department. So based on your explanation or your example, we would have to fill two spots. We'd have to put two bodies if awarded the grant and someone left for greener pastures. The information that I've handed out is the, I obviously didn't give you a lot of time to read it, but it's an email that I received regarding the update and the period, which is between, it opened June 2nd, and I have to complete the update if approved by June 16th. So that again, was why, the timeframe, we're not going to Public Safety.
I have a question. With the implementation of the safety expenditure, no reduction by the state, and I, excuse my verbiage on that, the requirement that we not reduce any spending towards officers or the protection of the residents, after the three years, and then we commit to a fourth year, because we committed to that fourth year, we could never go back down? If, or would we be able to?
Well, I think the caveat in the, in the state.
Because it's 2009 standard.
You know, we're talking federal money coming into the state. I think the caveat in the state requirement on that is unless approved by the Department of Treasury or whoever the agency is.
Department of Revenue.
Revenue, thank you. And I'm assuming that if we could show that it was a four-year grant, three years paid by the feds and one year covered by the municipality, that if there was no money available on that, in that fifth year, I'm assuming that the Department of Revenue, with that explanation, there wouldn't be any, any issues. I don't know if Terry can speak eloquently.
I don't know. I understand the question. I don't know the answer to it.
Okay. And I don't know for sure, but that would be, that would be my, my guess, if you will.
Oh, you're asking, and I if we approve the recent, it will be absolutely void of grant.
Correct. For me to update it?
We're updating the contract, but not necessarily approving the higher of any.
Right.
I move to approve the update on the application.
Thank you, Mark. Do you have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Joe. Any further discussion or questions of the Chief? All in favor of the motion, indicate by saying aye.
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 Both same sign. This was not a spending issue, hence the, there's no requirement for a roll call vote. Thank you.
No, we're just bumping into each other. We need more separation.
George, if I may, just in addition to the Chair's update, you'll see the sign behind you that says, "Thank you, Village of North Hudson." That was delivered to my office on, I believe it was Monday, from the North Hudson Elementary School as a thank you for their fun run, which went over very well. The weather was beautiful, the kids had a great time, and I'm told that was signed by every member or every student in the school. So it was kind of neat for her to bring that in, and they had such a great time that they are expecting to make that an annual event.
Very good.
So just to point that out, what's on the wall back there.
What was it, 300 and?
I think she said 380 some signatures, 83 signatures on there.
Ever since we opened this hall, the new hall, I've wanted something on this wall. I never would have imagined it would be a thank you from the elementary school kids. Very fitting, and I think it'll stay there for a while.
Very good.
But not forever.
You get a new one next year.
Well, maybe. Well, then we'll just add to it. Just ongoing. All right. Okay. Public welfare, since our Chair is on a yacht somewhere, I'll ask Stan if he would like to update us on public welfare?
Okay. We had a discussion about the Wildlife Management Grant process and what that is. That's an urban deer reduction program. The notes reflect the board, you know, about shots taken, deer that were recovered, and the possibility of, with funding from the state and contributions by the village, there was no recommendations for any, you know, addressed by the board. I think we'll talk about that again. We did have, we're discussing also the, that the compost bin Viola, Violia has compost bins available. We have one over in the corner for the citizens to check out. They're, they have a cost of $79 here, but I believe.
It's actually 72.
That number is incorrect on the, on our notes. It's 72.50 that would be paid by the residents that choose to purchase such a backyard compost bin for their, their property. And we'd recommend that, you know, we would say, you know, if the village, you know, that Viola, Violia can check out the, or I mean advertise, and we would put up signs here and on the website about the compost bins, but, so it would be up to the citizens, which they pay on their bill after it was delivered. We had discussion about future agenda items, which include the animal warden contract, a manning code book to include addressing responsibilities of dog owners who are repeat offenders, and allowing the animal warden to cite owners and matching, and then there's matching funds for the DNR grant of the Wildlife Management that I mentioned earlier. So I think that's about it.
There, I just want, I kind of stuck my neck out here a little bit. There is a motion in here to approve the sale of compost bins to the village residents, to the village residents at a cost of 72.50. I appreciate it very much that Viola, Violia thought enough to ask us to move on this. I did talk to a representative from Violia, and I expressed my appreciation for bringing that to the table and perhaps getting the board to vote on it. I said to him, while I appreciate that very much, I'm gonna stick my neck out and say that in the next bill, if you want to include that little third sheet of paper, a slip, so that a resident could purchase one from you, you can do that without board approval. By doing so, I felt it was giving the board almost the power of saying, "Buy from Violia," and that's not the case. In fact, I have done some, and I'm sure everyone who's been in any of the home stores around here have seen, they also have compost bins. I checked out the price of others in the local stores, and I saw that they were in a neighborhood of $79, $80. This, the one from Violia is a little less expensive, and it's a lot bigger than the ones that I did see in the other stores. So I just want to mention, there's no requirement to buy it from Violia. They're simply making them available to you as a courtesy, and also to make some money, let's be honest. I was in a local grocery store recently, and on the whole idea of composting and yard waste and so on, you can buy five bags for, well, I'll just say, if you walk around the grocery, even the grocery stores, you can get the biodegradable bags. That's one way of getting rid of your yard waste. Another way is to contact Violia, and they will sell you or loan you a garbage, a special garbage can for, what is it, $23?
$23.40.
And 40 cents for the whole season, which ends up being a lot cheaper than buying the bags, which are a very specific size. You can't squeeze anymore in, and you still have to then go out or stop in here, or you stop at Freedom Station and pick up a tag for $1.50. When you add up all those costs, I'm not trying to sell you another garbage can, but it may be a cheaper way to go. So, thank you, Stan. Thank you also for not having us vote on another expenditure. Appreciate that. All right. I'll ask the board members if you have any, anything else before we convene in the closed session.
Our clerk?
Oh, I'm sorry. I was down towards the end of the page. Colleen?
Not too much, anyway. Just to let the residents know that the Browns Beach shall be opening on June 12th, which is Saturday after school gets out, and Mark has hired lifeguards. And other than that, we're just still working on what we've been working on for the park up at, for Jansen Memorial Park and the other projects. That's it.
Boy, it's gonna be a little chilly. I want to see our lifeguards jump in there and do some yardage. Wetsuits. Thank you, Colleen. I apologize for... Now, we move into, we convene in the closed session per Section 19.85, subsection 1C and E, to consider health care benefit compensation for village employees in bargaining efforts related to health care benefits. Thank you, Dale.
Anybody want to take a five-minute break while we're closing shop?
Let's take a roll call vote, okay?
Aye.
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 Aye.